Brought a bug from home.
Oh, that's all right.
It startled me.
That's all right.
I think it was a whole bunch of stuff I didn't recognize and then I was like, well, that was last cow.
I've done that before since I started reading through my presentations. Wait till your listeners out in the hallway and that'll start.
Before there's a call?
Yeah, exactly. All righty.
You want to move that up to?
Move it up to seven?
Seven, okay.
Six A?
Six A. Well, actually, there's already a six A on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, that's true.
Six point five.
Six point five.
We'll do that tonight. All right, I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, October 15th. Our first item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Araza.
Here.
Nancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Piper.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Sulfur.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Ure. Saran. Vocal singer.
Here.
Okay, so that's 12.
Tonight's also, next item agenda on the agenda tonight is a reminder, please speak directly on the microphone, make sure you can see the little green light on if you come up to address us. Item three would be approval of minutes for September 24th, 2024. Any changes, corrections, anything? Can I get a motion to recommend a counsel?
So moved.
Motion by Sulfur, second by Yazi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next will be item number four, which is items to be removed, editor changed. The only thing I know is we're going to move item 10 up to six point five so we can get that done while we've got people here. Yeah, we can do a motion for it.
All right, so moved.
And second by Malone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any matters from the public tonight for anything not on the agenda? Okay, nobody online. Move then to item six, which is the consent agenda, Alderman Beck.
The consent agenda reads as follows, ordinance 2024-63, establishing special area, service area 71, resolution 2024-132-R, accepting a public utility easement at 1320 Hart Road. Resolution 2024-33-R, accepting a public utility easement at 1150 McKee Street. And for approval, the Cow executive session minutes for July 23rd, 2024, contracts relating to the purchase, sale, or delivery of electricity. And July 30th, 2024, the decision on the third ward alderman appointment. I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I'll tell you, Malone got it. It's quick tonight. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, then we will move on to item six point five, which is resolution 2024-127-R, authorizing the fire chief to execute a contract with Fire Service Incorporated for amount not to exceed $2,060,390 for a tower aerial ladder. Just seems like a lot more.
Lot of money, a lot of, lot of discussion, and a lot of support. Had I known that's what it takes to get me out of this meeting earlier, I'd probably direct them to come here more often. They're, they're honestly here on their own volition in support of this particular resolution. We currently have a 2006 tower ladder, Pierce aerial tower ladder, which is nearing the end of its service life. Actually, the maintenance on that ladder has been progressing extensively over the last two years. Last year, it was $50,000, about $50,446.9 to be exact, and this year, we've already achieved $89,337 in repairs on that one unit. To give you an idea, while it sounds like a lot of money, $2 million for an aerial apparatus, it's a vital piece of equipment, obviously, for the safety and security of our, our community. We developed a committee within the fire department of, you know, many members, led by Lieutenant Scott Stevens and by Lieutenant Bob Scott, Robert Bob Scott Hogan. So both of them led the committee of other lieutenants and firefighters to develop the specifications and oversee the basic needs to make sure that it fulfilled their, their needs, the community's needs, and met all of our, you know, requirements. So with all that being done, going through, through the HGAC, which is a competitive bidding process used nationally to provide the best underlying quotes for those, we came back with a competitive and a We came back with a competitive and acceptable quote and bid from Fire Service Inc., which represents E one, emergency one, fire apparatus. All the specs, these things were included in your packet, all twenty five pages, if you really wish to go over it, I can give you a brief overview. It is, it continues to be a tower ladder, ninety five foot tower ladder with a minimum out of water of three hundred gallons, minimum hose loads of six hundred feet, and I always hate interruptions. That's good. It also has the compliment, compliments of hook necessary hose, but in addition, the committee felt it was important to double the ladder. The ground ladder supports on this for all of our senior living communities and things to, to reach areas of one and two stories and access in addition to the upper floors of those. So I'm sure there are questions. I'm happy to answer any questions. We realize that it is a considerable sum of money. Fire apparatus has been increasing in, in price and time for delivery over, since COVID, honestly, and, and asking the manufacturers why, they still say it's because of supply chain problems and, and things. This custom made truck will take three years to build, to give you an idea. The average lifespan on, on fire apparatus and trucks is approximately twenty years. As I said, it's replacing a two thousand and six, it'll take three years to get here. It will be placarded as, as a twenty twenty seven apparatus, hopefully, delivery in twenty twenty seven at that point in time, at which time, as you can see, hopefully, our truck will achieve that length of service for us, the existing truck. Questions or anything, I realize, like I said, it's.
Anybody have any questions?
Are we still going to be probably experiencing outlays in terms of maintenance on this older one for three more years then, too?
Yes, we are, but if you'll recall, two years ago, we purchased a reserve ladder truck. That particular ladder truck has served us very well. We purchased it for about sixty thousand dollars at the time. The year we purchased, twenty twenty three, it cost us nothing in maintenance. That was first year we had it, and last year, it cost us seven thousand three hundred and twenty three dollars. To be honest, we, it has, over the last two years, run more than the other truck and will continue to do. Does not have the versatility capabilities and things of the larger, of the larger truck. I have to understand that part of that maintenance and things is, Alderman Wolf can explain with it. Rear axles on it and slide slip aspects, it tears tires. And it costs me, it, it's got ten tires, it cost me ten thousand dollars a year just for tires on that particular piece of apparatus.
That truck is like sixty five or seventy thousand pounds total loaded. And with the tires that don't turn at all in the back, every time they go around a corner, they wear part of the tread every time they turn. And if you stand there and watch it go by, sometimes you can hear it. That's just the way it's designed, that's the reality of a big truck like that to have a hundred foot ladder, you have to deal with that.
Wolf said, that is the, the thing, the other one is a smaller type of apparatus. It, it's good as a reserve or a backup, it really doesn't serve our overall needs, but it does keep us within the ISO rate requirements and for initial responses while we wait for our partner cities or cities around us to finally arrive on things like that, in that nature.
Yeah, you indicated this was in the twenty twenty four budget, but I, I didn't get a chance to look, how much was budgeted and where's this number coming in comparison to that?
Well, transparency totally, I'll, I'll give you the whole thing. As you know, we, we said in to a, you know, capital fund for replacements, the original capital fund on replacement that Chief Dyke set up, and understandably so, set up for one point one million to replace this. So when I became chief, realizing that we would see extensive increase as we saw in the industry over time. That was funded through, you know, Peggy Colby's unique and expertise financing, she does a wonderful job to the two million dollar point at this point. The committee worked extensively hard, we look, you know, average rigs, and I even asked if they, they send that to me, we're seeing average rigs of over two million dollars in purchase in our area, neighboring department just purchased one for about two point three million. So through their, except, you know, their extensive work to try to provide the, the most economical, but, you know, truck and meeting our needs, we were able to do it for two million and, two million and sixty thousand, some change, I could look at it. Two million sixty thousand three hundred and ninety dollars is the final quote on it. And we have just a few more adjustments, it will, we don't, we don't expect it at all, we're at the point where we could approve this and lock that in at this point, we, we expect it to go up, but we might be. What we have right now, we have two million, I budgeted in an increase for next year for the twenty twenty five budget, an extra hundred thousand just for the. Currently in the twenty twenty four budget, and, and talking with Peggy, we'll have put away two million, one hundred thousand. Earned through the interest on the two million over the three years it takes for delivery. You're not paying anything upfront or anything, are collecting the interest on that two million, which we already actually have in the bank in our, in at this point in time.
Okay, so within the ballpark.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's, it, it's right in there. And you guys can be honest, I was very hard on them to make, to make the budgetary numbers, but honestly, the, the omen's work goes to them in doing so, in realizing. By saving within the parameters of our, you know, budgetary constraints.
Yeah, a couple of points here, number one, I'm in strongly in support of this, but I wanted to say that previous city councils have amended the city building permit process so that for every new house that's built, they pay a thousand dollars right off the top for, to be put into a special fund to purchase fire equipment. So right now, with what we've got being built over on the west side, we've got over three hundred houses in line here to be, so that's going to be another three hundred thousand that we will get as income level for the fire department. The other thing I'd just like to say, I mean, we've got an excellent fire department, they're ISO class one, they qualify for the best rating you can give them. But one of the things I would say, one of the things that they may someday need, we have six senior living communities in this, in Batavia now, and most of them have multiple stories. And to have that bucket at the end of this ladder, the day may come when we got a floor full of smoke and we got to get some elderly people out of there, and to try to go up on a normal ladder and pull them down. But if we can get them in the bucket, we may be able to put one or two in there at one time, and then just bring them down to the ground, drop them off, and go right back up. So this is a vital piece of equipment that the city of Batavia should have in its inventory to, to do what they need, may need to do sometime. So I would strongly encourage the council's support of this because this is something that we probably, hopefully, never get to use, but if it, it does happen, we are going to have the ability to do what we need to do.
Just two quick questions, one is, so the, our current ladder truck, the two thousand and six, is that, will we sell the surplus when we get this new one in?
We will surplus one of the, one of the trucks, it'll be based on mechanicals and everything. Most likely, we would surplus the older ninety eight truck.
The one we got from St. Charles.
I have to look at the service history right now, right now, even in my conversations with Peggy, if you had to ask me today, the two thousand. I have to put, as you know, I just told you, a, a lot of money in it to, to carry it the next couple of years. It's my hope that it, it, you know, will, I guess, turn the corner and serve as a good reserve, but in our community with our, our growing populace and the needs within our senior living communities. I would strongly encourage we maintain a reserve trucks, we always have one to maintain our ISO. Truck will be surplus to replace, you know, in the replacement of this.
Did you have another question? Okay. This is more of potential for an in-depth discussion at another time perhaps, but, and I support the purchase of this vehicle, especially given the lead times and, you know, logistics difficulties we're, we're looking at here. Was there any consideration of maneuverability of a vehicle, especially one that's this large, especially in regards to if we're looking at more traffic calming solutions around town, like how those would work well together?
The answer is, of course, yes, and, and to give you more data information on that. So this, part of the truck and part of the concern and the due diligence of the committee was to demo different trucks, and we had different trucks. We even had a mid-mount out, there was a lot of conversation about the mid-mount and things. This particular truck at the night, at the ninety five foot level gives it what we call more maneuverability, more driveability, and the ability to work through some of our older neighborhoods. We go everywhere from the commercial side, you know, out on the Kirk Road industrial area, where we have probably one of our, our highest known building at six stories of Aldi, all the way down to the old section of town with very narrow streets and things. So it has to be able to maneuver in, even into some of the alleyways, and still hit the commercial aspects. So there was, they, they, we also know the driveability of the two trucks we have, which are two different, one's a single axle, one's a dual axle. This truck actually kind of splits the two of them, so it provides an extra maneuverability while still having the reach and capabilities.
Fantastic, thank you.
One question I have is I saw that we upgraded the outriggers for it, is that also help with it reaching down? Because I know like the truck that we have today, the big one we have, can go like ten percent below grade or something if we had to do a river rescue with it or anything downhill?
It's still, yeah, it, it still has a negative reach, but that varies on where you, the placement of the truck is.
Right.
You understand off the rear of the truck, you have a greater negative reach than, and, and that goes for side to side off the truck for stability and height.
And I just figured that.
So it, it does have, you know, a, a negative angle aspect to it, it won't have any greater negative aspect than what we have, so. On the water, I can't guarantee it's going to be fine based on the six foot.
Right, but if it ever had to be used for it, that would actually, actually, I would think would help stability just with the larger outriggers.
Yeah, to, to a certain degree, but such as the dam, it will not go down the lower portion of the dam based on the height of the river wall.
Right.
I don't believe it will even get that. It probably would, I don't know, best guess, some of the guys work it more than I, I'd say four to five feet maybe on a lower angle and a full, full reach from grade. But you have to remember that it's also mounted at about six or seven feet above, you know, above grade too.
Yeah, I got over my fear heights and went up and, and down a few times, it's, it's a very interesting piece of equipment to be.
Oh, yeah, actually, I have it right here in the specs, it'll do a negative six foot.
Okay.
So it, it goes everywhere from negative six feet to five feet at the various angles, so at, at negative four feet, it will be a thousand pounds away for people. At, which is our important thing, up to eighty, up to the eighty foot, which is part of the overall, for the guys to understand this, for you, this is what's called a head, what we refer to as a heavy duty truck. You can even just purchase a light duty. So this heavy duty truck, which the mayor alluded to, will go to eighty feet, which will do the landings, for example, our tallest senior living. It can hold twelve personnel, so you can bring them on the basket and take them down the ladder without having to do it, up to twelve people at one time, based on its specifications.
I will say, after been, being through this several different times, I'm really glad that we continue to use, you know, personnel from the fire department to put the specs together and put what they know they use, that they like, what things that they want to have in the truck, things that they don't want to have as part of the truck or don't need for part of the truck. So I think that's a great thing to have, is to have, you know, everybody in the department gets some input into it, and then the group, you know, funnels that down into what they build as their truck specs and then do that. So I'm very happy that that's the way this gets done, and it's not just, hey, we like this truck and it's a great deal, so we're just going to buy one, so.
And they're very passionate about it, we, there was the opportunity to look at some others that are demos or opportunities that came by, but the guys felt very strongly that this.
Questions or comments? They just want to make sure that we okay buying the truck.
They just want to make sure that I do what I'm supposed to.
Yeah, this gets done.
It's good to have that many guys behind me, this many in front of me, all the time.
So we have, we have two point one million today, but we're not paying them until we get delivery of the truck, right?
In the budget, there's two million.
Right.
My capital replacement fund is the mayor indicated, which is funded by rooftops and things, and a tax has been done. I talked to Peggy this morning, or yesterday, there's two million three hundred and, wait, two million three hundred thousand in there, but I haven't paid for the new engine that's coming, which is seven hundred thousand. So it'll go back down under, do the math, it'll be one million, six, one point six million in that, but it gets funded every year, and that next budget would, should be five hundred thousand plus that account or interest annually. So it's not a matter of having to borrow money from the general fund or anything like that, it is, it is in there, it is funded, and it will be funded to its totality in three years.
And we, yeah, so we pay them in twenty seven, we don't pay them when we cut them a P O.
No, there is different funding, financing formulas, that is how, you know, Peggy and the city is determined to do it. So we will pay for it upon delivery, just as we are with our engine, after, you know, it completes a final inspection and test.
Okay, and, and even if it goes down, I mean, who knows, that might not happen, but, you know, lot can change in three years, both in the positive or negative, right?
And that's why it's important that they guarantee the contract and contract price at this point in time. Some of the manufacturers are taking risks, I know one that's, a local department, they're, they're actually taking it, manufacturers ending up with a two hundred thousand dollar loss, so it does occur. And they're trying to get out of it, but that's just how it works.
Okay, so we will enter into the agreement with some sort of max number.
The request at this point in time is to authorize, I have the contract in front of me, we sent it out, and the current, current price is two million sixty thousand three hundred and ninety dollars.
Maybe I just misunderstood, I thought that could potentially change.
It can change, until I sign it, it will not go up, we could change it a little bit lower by going with a, just a, a different power package in, Alderman Wolf will understand. At, at present, something I noticed just actually in the last two days on it, the motor in this particular one happens to be an over the road motor. Fire departments, military exempt, we don't have to do the over the road motor, and we can actually stay with some cars, we can go to an exempt motor. Emissions, but it also doesn't require an auxiliary cooler for the, for the transmission reducer. It's more mechanical than, and he can.
Less maintenance and less supplies, and less problems to go wrong with it if you don't have to have the other equipment that's on it to provide the emissions reduction stuff that they have on it, and there are all problems on diesels.
Yeah.
So if you can get away from having to do that, I would say yes, do it.
And, and that was some, I just, I just noticed over the weekend, having done the inspection on our exist, on our new. And we'll look at paying for it, I just happened to pick that up in the manufacturer, it indicated that the, it's a Cummins motor, an L fifteen, but the, the, oh, yeah, that the L twelve was not going to be available anymore, but in talking to the Cummins manufacturing dealer, they are not, they are going to extend it for another five years on that particular motor. So I, you know, I feel strongly, we had looked at it, we looked at a cost savings of it, and through all of my experience and what I've talked to through the service dealers and the dealer themselves, an L twelve motor is true and tried, it's still going to be available in twenty seven. It'll save us money with less, more mechanical, less electronical operation, so should be more durable for that period of time, still comes with a five thousand dollar, five thou, five, ah, easy to say, five year warranty, one hundred thousand mile, which we don't hit here. Five-year warranty, 100,000 miles, which we don't hit here in Batavia, which is, we don't have the mileage. So just, so you know, so that, my, my intention is to go back to the manufacturer and the proposal and look at the other engine, and say, look, it is available, would rather have the government-grade, military-grade motor rather than the over-the-road motor. That's all.
Yeah, no, I, I was just, I wanted to make sure we weren't, you know, having the potential of ballooning costs. I didn't, I, I would-
Only if I, if I don't do my job and get this signed sooner than later.
Exactly, absolutely.
And that's why, that's why we're here right now, and I will, I will have that answer by the time it gets to council next week. So if you like, I can update you if we get a, you know, a little reduction in price at that point. But what I'm looking for is, you know, approval for the base or minimum cost now of 2 million, not to exceed 2,60,390 dollars.
Questions, comments? Now, would someone like to make a motion to recommend Resolution 2024-127-R authorizing the fire chief to execute a contract with Fire Service Incorporated in the amount not to exceed 2,60,390 dollars for a tower aerial ladder? Motion by Lancy, second by Lehman. Roll call, please.
Raza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Piper.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwer. Saron.
Aye.
Vogel Singer.
Aye.
That's 13.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Positive recognition. Thank you, everybody that had a hand in coming up with the specs and getting everything done for that. Look forward to getting a new truck.
You are welcome to stay.
The whole time.
All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is a discussion, a review of the existing solid waste transfer host agreement. Gary?
Senator. City staff was asked to begin a review of the existing solid waste host agreement. Before we do that and start to invest a lot of staff time, we did want to bring the discussion to council. It really was never a discussion, it was just a request. So we did want to get more of a detailed discussion as to what council's goal or goals might be, coming from staff's review of the, of the transfer station agreement. Do you want us to survey surrounding communities to determine if the prices paid by our citizens are competitive? Is that the driving issue? If that's not the driving issue, staff does agree though that now is a good time to begin this process, because there are many other issues in the transfer station agreement that we should keep in mind, not the least of which is the disposal of our sludge from the city's wastewater treatment facility, which is a huge benefit to the city. And I know that there was a specific mention of the tipping fees. So that's the third thing that we're asking for council's input on, is if that is specifically a piece of data or a point of data that you guys are seeking, and then if there's any other host agreement topics that you would like to explore. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over and I'll take notes.
I, I know that Mark, Uwer was one that had brought this forward and talked about this. I'm pretty sure, if I remember correctly, a couple of things he wanted to talk about was the tipping fees and what the schedule was going to be, you know, if we try to move into a new contract with them, how we would set that up or what we would ask for and where that would go. The things that I remember of the original agreement we had, there was requirements if they wanted to increase, you know, how much tonnage they were able to drop at the facility. And I think they did that once, maybe twice, that they increased that number. So I guess that would be one of the questions I would have, is where are they at currently? I'm sure we could find that out from our fees that we get that. And then look at, do we want to talk about allowing them any further increase moving into the future? What would they, what are they going to ask for? Because that's one of the things they would like to do, is they'd like to be able to get as much through there as they can. And then, you know, I think of it as the amount of time that we've had that, I've probably gotten one or two complaints over the time that that's been there. So regardless of what company has managed it or run it, they've always had, you know, a good, I think, a good track record. If something gets dropped by one of their trucks leaving, they go out, they clean it up. If there's any issues with, I think they had one small fire there, you know, anything that's happened out there, they rectify it immediately. You know, because I think they realize that that revenue stream for them is something they have to take care of and something that we should be aware of and also look to, you know, maintain that in that, that spot. So-
I can confirm that it was probably about three or four years ago, there were a number of trucks near the Prairie Commons area and a lot of debris on the road. We contacted them and they had the road cleaned up in two hours.
I think they've always been responsive and done anything they needed to do, because I, like I said, I think it's a very good revenue stream for the company that's running it, and they will protect that pretty much at all costs. If they need, whatever they got to do, they make sure they do it right away. So I think, you know, we also have to be aware of that and realize that, you know, we need to maintain that relationship moving forward and also come up with a similar agreement and, you know, not walk away from money that's out there or not allow them to try to change that. So, Abby?
Yeah, I know one of the questions I would have, I went back in my email from when we were discussing the new waste contract, and Groot had said that their pricing would have been reduced by 20% if we didn't have to use this, this waste transfer. And I agree, I wouldn't want to lose the transfer station. And I also, I was kind of watching a nearby town try and site a new waste transfer station in their town and the pushback and the resistance from the community, so I know how hard it can be for these companies to get one. So I doubt they want to leave and try and reestablish somewhere else. So if we're able-
Volumes about this big by the time that agreement was done, the citizens committee, and I can't tell you how many meetings we had to do that.
Yeah, so I, I remember thinking or hearing that we were in a forever contract with them. So if there was some, it's nice to know that it's not a forever contract. If there is some leverage that we can use and find out, are we able to get out of that requirement to use them? If we could use Groot, are they still going to do any reduction in price to use their tipping station instead? And just kind of, yeah, what those different factors look like.
Well, I even thought of, you know, after we had discussed that during that contract change, was do we, when we go to renegotiate this transfer station, do we work out a deal with, doesn't matter who it is, but the refuse that comes from our area, one, it makes more sense to drop it locally and then get it into bigger trucks, more efficient, if there's a discount for just what we drop. You know, and if that helps make our contracts with the, you know, the Packer trucks that are the waste haulers in our own town, then if it gets dropped here, one, that makes more sense, and two, if it's at a fee similar to whatever, you know, or discounted fee that's here, does that, is that something that we try to work into that? You know, because I know that originally that was one of the things, is the contract we had with them was a lower price because they were dumping it at their own place.
So, Tony?
Yeah, not to speak for Mark, but the conversations I've had with him is, you know, it's about the, you know, the contract comes up real quick here, as, I think it's, I think I voted three times on the waste contract since I've been on council, two or three times, but I-
It's like five.
Yeah. And every time, there's been issues and pushback from, you know, we heard complaints. And so surveying the surrounding communities is helpful as we go along, so it's not just when we come up to it, we find out, so we can watch that. But, you know, as Abby was talking about, we, we get revenue from, you know, from the station, which we have to offset that, we have to consider, you know, the benefit of that compared to being required to tip their, like Groot says, for 20% more, is it offset by that? And I think having that data as we go along over this five-year contract, or, you know, what do we have, two, two and a half years left, will be more helpful when we come to make that next decision. So definitely suggests that the survey of surrounding communities and their contracts.
I, I agree with Tony. The thing that we have to really look at is, you know, they say they'll give us a 20% discount, and if that means that's going to be less, less revenue going through that tipping, through that station, how are we going to make up that revenue? You know, is that revenue that we're going to lose, that we're going to have to put back onto our residents? And so you have to look at, consider that cost of, yeah, look at, we're giving you a 20% discount on your waste, but now we have to come up with some revenue. And what is that difference? So that would be an interesting fact to really take a look at.
Gary, I, I feel like we might have had that figure at one time about what percentage of what is tipped at that transfer station is City of Batavia. I feel like it was about a 3% factor, but we, I want to look into it and verify that amount.
I don't remember. Apologize.
I don't remember a number that we put to that. I know it was, it was small compared to the overall tonnage that got dropped there, especially after they increased from what they originally had.
Right. And then also, does Groot, I mean, do their trucks just come through and just do the one pickup and take it back? Or are they actually filling up their truck, having to go and tip it and then come back and do more garbage? You know, what is the distance between our tipping station and their tipping station? You know, and that potential effect-
Their tipping station is in West Chicago. The Groot tipping station.
Answer your question, though. A typical residential truck cannot do eight hours of collection all with just one load. They do have to go and dump and come back, so typically.
So from an environmental standpoint, putting on my Abby hat, you're looking at the trucks putting that time into the, you know, that, into the environment, so.
Right, and that would be, to me, if I was on the business side of it and I was thinking, okay, if I have to send my trucks and they have to do a two-mile run back and forth to dump twice a day so they can do an eight-hour shift on garbage pickup day, does it make more sense to have it here and charge whatever fees? Or do I have to send them 10 miles every time back and forth and they lose that time in traffic? They lose that time in fuel, you know, all the things that factor into that, does it actually make more sense to drop it locally than it does to go back to their own place?
And then they have to plant another truck, which is an additional cost. So that's where I question where they say, it'll be 20% less.
That could be a bargaining strategy or something when they're doing their, you know. But again, that's another, another thing we have to factor into this when we get to the garbage contracts again. Because I think we learn all this stuff over time, that that's the reality now of the way it's done. You know, especially when you have a waste transfer station in your own town.
I think what I'm hearing here is we think we have leverage when it comes to negotiating, but we kind of don't know without some of the facts, right? We can pontificate on their business model and if that extra mileage matters to them or not, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. But it does sound like we think that tipping stations are rare and new ones are even rarer, and that we do want to maybe use some of that leverage in a way that can benefit our citizens, right? So what I'm hearing is, yeah, I think the data, right? Let's, let's look what our neighboring communities are doing, what they're paying, and what kind of the actual impact of 20% savings here versus the loss of tipping revenue there actually means. And to me, that would tell me, does a renegotiation make a lot of sense or not? Sort of what are the actual figures?
I will say a couple of things that I remember that were told to us, and, you know, not just at council meetings, but, you know, after them, several of the, the legal team, especially from, I believe at that time it was Onyx, they had never agreed to a contract that had as much in it as ours did. You know, they had never agreed to constant cleanup or any of the 12 other things or whatever we came up with from the citizens committee and everybody that had input on that contract to cite the waste transfer station. That, that contract was more than they had ever had to deal with from their side. So I don't think we're going to get everything that was in that one, but the goal would be to try to keep the good things that have been in that contract as long as they have been there, and then try to, you know, figure out how we keep that and, and move forward pretty close to what we've got. We'll see what they say.
In negotiation theory, we call that foot in the door. We already got it.
Yeah.
Don't give it up.
Right.
But that's negotiation down the line. I just, I think we got some leverage here and I think it's worthwhile to-
The other thing that we need to research from a legal standpoint is what leverage we have to obligate them to sign a new agreement, because the agreement terminates in 30 years. So the original deal was 30 years of sharing tipping fees with us. So we'll have to look into what, you know, basis we have to have them engage with us in another agreement.
And also look at what's in the contract now as far as extension or-
Right.
You know, renegotiation. There, I'm sure that there are clauses, and I don't remember all of it. I think it was five years ago, I finally got rid of the giant books and recycled all the paper that was in there.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. This is much better feedback, so we know where we're headed, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to item eight, which is Resolution 2024-129-R authorizing approval of plat of easement for 550 North Randall Road. And who's going to go? Pull that up. So that is for the Imagine Theater. Just got to get this so I can read it. Part about relocation of the sewer that was out there for the easement for wastewater treatment, I think. Am I right?
I just want to make a note that the plat of easement drawing for this is actually under the next agenda item.
I was going to say, I know that part of this is not where it's supposed to be. I do remember when I was reading through this that, why is this attached to the other one? So did everybody notice that? And if they have any questions on that, I think this is just the formality on the easement on it, is all that's there. So I don't think there's any issue with it, we can get what we want out there.
Right.
No questions. I'll make the motion that we recommend a council Resolution 2024-129-R approving plat of easement for public utilities on 550 North Randall Road, Imagine Theater. Okay. Okay. Motion by Wolf, second by Malay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item nine, which is Resolution 2024-131-R confirming appointment of director and alternate to the Board of Northern Illinois Municipal Power Agency. And Kerry's back up there.
Thank you. As you all know, I'm planning to retire from my MRF in early 2025. Still have about 10 years to work after that, but at least from the MRF standpoint, I'm going to be retired. Every October, NIPA holds its annual meeting where we do elect our officers for the upcoming year. And since 2013, I have served as Batavia's NIPA representative on the NIPA board. But given my retirement and given that we're coming up on our annual meeting, I do feel that now is the best time for me to step down so that the Batavia can appoint a new director and alternate going forward. I'm recommending that council approve Resolution 2024-131, which would officially appoint Rahat Bari as the city's director or representative, and then Steve Allen as the city's alternate representative to the NIPA board. Stepping down from the board means that I'll no longer be officially involved on the Prairie State Management Committee. I've been NIPA's alternate and representative on that committee for the last half dozen or so years. And I'm going to still do External Affairs Committee and the Carbon Capture, which I've been actively involved with up until next February or so when I, when I officially retire. So I will, again, I stand behind my recommendation for Rahat and Steve.
Anybody have any questions, comments on it?
This is the reality that it's finally happening, that Kerry's going to leave, so this is the first step.
I'm still in denial.
I know. I won't vote no, but I'll, I'll complain about it for a while.
I would just say, I fully support that, all the confidence in Rahat, and he will have big shoes to fill, literally.
Steve gets one, Rahat gets the other. Yeah, I have all the confidence in them too. I mean, I think they've been involved in so much of what's going on, you know, in the department and having Steve back at the electric department, I think, is a great thing. So I, I think we're in good shape there. So no other comments? I'll make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution- I'll make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 2024-131R confirming appointment of director and alternate to the Board of the Illinois Municipal Power, which you can see.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Malay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, then we move on to item 11, Resolution 2024-130R authorizing software license and agreement, services agreement. Howard is making his way up here for this. Good evening.
Good evening. So this is in regards to our Viewworks asset management software, which is used primarily at Public Works. What we're looking to do is have the developers, Atkins, Realist, not only give us or sell us or rent us the licensing, but also host the system. They started hosting a number of years ago and it, it makes a lot of sense for us. It should improve services for Public Works by letting them manage, maintain the system. It will save the IT department a bunch of time by not having to move it, update operating systems, or let their employees on to update the system or provide support. So this puts a little bit more control of the system in the Public Works hands. So when there is a problem, they are able to call them, they are then able to, and that is, Viewworks people are able to get into the system, support them, update, or take care of whatever problem or issue there is. There's some other benefits that go along with this, such as diversifying our cybersecurity risk. So that puts it out into the cloud. So if something does happen to us, the system is, is safe. They do supply or implement backup, so we should, hopefully we, we would be safe. And if we do this in 2024, we would save $5,000 in implementation fees. So that's one of the other reasons we're asking now rather than wait until the first of the year. So the, the additional cost on top of the license fee, the license fee is 14,000 and we've already, we already have that in the budget, but the additional cost is $15,750 for hosting. That's something that's not budgeted. But being that, that will be split among four funds, each fund is capable of absorbing just under $4,000 for the remainder of the year.
Have any questions?
I like the idea of lightening the load on IT that they can concentrate on all the other stuff that they have to do without having to manage this.
Should help hopefully move some of the implementation that we're still working on a little bit faster.
Okay, then I'll make the motion to recommend to council Resolution 2024-130R authorizing software license and service agreement.
Second.
By Wolf, second by Malay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are good to go there.
Alan, I think we're just about out of time for tonight, so we might have to push 12 or 13 to the next.
Wow. I was just going to say.
He's been waiting since May.
Talk about this before, it just popped up.
No worries.
Okay. We don't have a closed session to go into, let's talk about personnel first. I don't know if we can do this. Okay, we'll move on to item 12, which is approval of promoting Max Weiss to Assistant City Administrator and Project Manager.
Well, thank you, Alan.
So moved.
Yeah, I mean, I would be remiss, though, if I didn't mention at this meeting how far Max has exceeded the expectations of what we had for a management analyst. I mean, to provide support in the way of research and creating reports and a lot of assisting with on projects. And instead, he's leading projects. He's making sure things move forward. He's doing all of the things that a project manager would be expected to do. And that is, I think, a greater value that he's bringing to the table than just the responsibilities of a management analyst. And so I am recommending that his position be upgraded from a grade 13 to a grade 16.
I like the title change more because I think that represents more of what he does than, than just what he was hired as.
Yes.
So I definitely agree with that. Eddie?
And wasn't this a position that the city used to have before the recession? So we're still kind of filling in what we lost all those years ago.
Absolutely.
We definitely had an Assistant City Administrator.
Yes.
And sometime Project Manager, I'll say. That was, you know, and it was one of those that the title was there, but it wasn't really an assigned duty, you know, on the project side of it. So I'll say I definitely agree with this. Anybody else wants to comment? Okay.
Thank you.
I see lots of nods and I know we can, we can, we can do this one real easy that, I'll say, we have a motion and a second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to ask for a opposed because I don't think there are any. Unless Max is afraid of it.
It's not obvious that on day one you see somebody's potential right off the bat. So, Max, you've been great.
And this is just the start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll move on to item 13, which is Ordinance 2024-064, 2025 wages and salaries for non-collective bargaining employees.
It's not that I was nervous that you were going to say no, but I did have Wendy already include this change in the wage and salary.
Good evening. Obviously, prior to our soon-to-be budget discussions, I have before you the proposed wage and salary ordinance for 2025. We look at many economic indicators and I have them listed in the memorandum, but and obviously, one single number solely isn't a sole determining factor as to kind of what the proposed number would be, but I can go over kind of looking at them all together as well as the economic forecast or outcome. As you know, starting in the beginning of the year, inflation was at record highs and this year is a little bit of a roller coaster economically. As the year is winding down, it does seem that inflation and some of the economic indicators are beginning to stabilize. Obviously, it's an unknown, you never know, next week could be something different, but as of right now, the indicators seem as though they are stabilizing. So we took a look at the CPIU, Social Security COLA, first year wage increases for government contracts, the Economic Cost Index, and some recent arbitration awards. The National CPIU for the previous 12 months, which took us through September, is currently sitting at 2.4%. But there also is a local CPIU, which is Chicago Naperville, Elgin, and Illinois area. Currently, right now, that's sitting at 4.1. If you exclude food and energy costs, it's sitting at 5% for the past 12 months. Social Security, at the time I was writing the memo, came out that day, their cost of living increase is going to be 2.5. And then the Economic Cost Index for state and local employers for the past 12 months. And what that is, is that is an indication of the cost of wages as well as benefits as what it stands today, is, is the hourly cost going up, is the cost of wages and benefits to them. And that currently, right now, sits at 4.9. And then additionally, according to data compiled by Bloomberg Law, first year median wage increases for state and local governments currently right now sits at 4.9. And that was through July 2024. So based on all of the data and information, as well as looking at our past increases, staff is recommending a cost of living increase of 4% for all non-union employees. There is some additional adjustments and I'll just, I want to go through those, you'll see on the wage ordinance that's attached. There is the removal of the public properties and service and maintenance worker position as well as the public properties and service crew leader position. As you may recall, that change happened, probably it's been two months ago, where it, those positions now report into the Streets Division. So they are, we're currently in discussions with the Labor IBEW in regards to including them in that. So they came off the wage ordinance. We are moving the public properties and service superintendent position to a pay grade 20. It was, it currently is a 21. That aligns more accurately with the duties of the position as well as aligns with the other superintendents. You'll see what, you know, as far as in the same area. We did make a change to the job title of Business Analyst. That was, that position was approved this year. We've had a, a little bit of a rough go with the recruitment process, we're still working on that. But we also did find through that process, this, a job title of Software Deployment Analyst made more sense. So there is that proposed change. And I apologize, at the time I posted this, I left one thing out, so I did make this edit and you'll see this, is that, as you may recall, recently, we had the discussion of the Assistant Public Works Director. So that position will be included. I can, I can send that out to you guys with an update. And that is included in pay grade 23. And that was approved on September 19th. And then addition of the position, Max's position we just talked about. And then there are a couple, reclassification of the IT Network Administrator. Currently, that position sits at a pay grade 13. I review all of the positions overall, compare them with our comparables. We have 11 comparables that we take a look at that meet our criteria. That position in, in particular, that person and their job description has steadily increased in responsibilities. And with that, taking a look at that, it would be changing from a pay grade 13 to a pay grade 15. The current comps showed, based on the responsibilities, they were, it was about 12% below the median, which was our, which is, as you know, our pay philosophy. And then there is the removal of the Code Compliance Officer that was listed in pay grade 12. This position has been rolled into, it combines the Building Inspector, Code Enforcement Officer positions currently filled. So that job title is no longer needed, so that was removed. And then additionally, there is removal of the language in regards to the Arbor certification as well as the pesticide certification. And those topics were specific to, specific to the PPS employees. And then the last thing is the removal of the Pay Per Meter Reader position. We had one person, we had started out with, in the time at least I've been here, we had, I think, three or four when I first started, and down to one. And based on improvements in technology and the things that the meter department has done, there's no longer the need for that position, so that position has been removed. And I can answer any questions or anything in regards to the information?
Any questions, comments on any of that?
Just more of a comment. This, thanks Wendy for, you know, the information you provided here, it's pretty, very thorough. I appreciate that. And, and I do support the 4%. I can tell you that's right in the ballpark of the contracts I'm negotiating with school districts at this time. I did, I'm always curious, though, to compare the, the increases for the exempt employees or the non-collectively bargained employees to the collectively bargained employees. And the, four of our five locals have, or collectively bargained agreements are finishing up three-year contracts with a combined increase of 9% over those three years. Whereas when you look at the exempt employees, we're looking at, over those three years, 10.75, so, so slightly higher. Now, a big part of that is timing, you know, where inflation was highest was right in the middle of those collective bargaining agreements. And there's, you know, there's, there's something, as you said, about the stability of, of having a longer contract, but I'm just bringing that to the attention of, of the, of the board here as, you know, you're, I'm sure you started at the table or if not, you're gearing up for it.
Absolutely.
With four contracts coming up in December, I'm sure you.
Yeah, we're already having conversations. I would definitely, yeah, as far as, I'll be honest, this is the first time, I think, in the history, and probably in 15 years or so, that it's, the tables have been changed. And honestly, I think it's just, was just purely timing. At the time of the approval of the three-year contracts, the economic outlook looks so different compared to when, as we look at these year by year. And absolutely, and I acknowledge that. And when I'm sitting at the table, I'm a pretty transparent kind of person. So I'm like, hey, look, this isn't about, this was never, the intent was to give one more than the other, it's just, you know, kind of where we are and we're having those conversations now. Yeah.
And that's evidenced by, you know, with the firefighters, it was, they did the one-year extension and so they, they're not up until the following year and it's, they're in a little closer position.
For sure.
Always been the philosophy of the city is to try to keep those as close together as we could, you know, whether they were in the union or not, you want to treat the people the same because they're all able to look at everybody's, you know.
Cost of living is the same for everyone.
Right. Well, and it's also public domain. You can also see every contract that we have and see every dollar that we pay to every employee. So they know that. I mean, that's the thing I always thought was interesting when I first got on the council was like, if we approve a budget and we have, you know, 3% or 4% in the budget, when the contract's coming up, they kind of know what we're planning or what we're willing to do. So the reality is it's pretty honest and open the whole way through it.
Anyone care to make the motion, recommend this to council?
Second.
Motion by Wolf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Big business done, now we move on to project status. Thanks, Wendy.
Okay, the first thing that I would like to discuss with you today is the opportunity that we have for a Phase Three of the lead service line replacements. The City of Batavia has been approved for up to $7 million to finish up all of the remaining lead service line replacements that we need. And that would be a $7 million loan for a 30-year term with 0% interest.
It's a good rate.
It's a darn good rate.
Is this over and above the, the first $4 million that we did that was the grant?
The first $4 million was forgivable.
Right.
The next $4 million was 0% for 20 years.
And another $7 million on top.
$7 million to finish it, and that's over 30 years. There's also, in 2025, we will have the opportunity to apply for particular census tract areas in the City of Batavia that qualify as low to moderate income. And it is possible that we may be able to, that represents about half of what we need to do, that we could get that under forgivable loan as well. So no guarantees, but the way that the numbers are in that census tract, it really looks like it qualifies for that program. But it's, you know, taking on more debt, and so I just wanted to make sure that in general, that you look favorably on that and would like to move forward, especially because last week, the EPA announced target dates by which cities have to completely get this done. And there are, as local, large cities that are freaking out about how in the world they're going to be able to finance all of this. So once again, I have to give so much credit to our Water Department and Superintendent Jeremy Barki for making sure that Batavia was there to have the opportunity to do all of this work so quickly and work that so dramatically affects the health of our community and especially the youngest members of our community. So thank you for supporting this.
Is that something we can market or any other towns marketing something like that?
I do think that we should, you know, as a municipality, we're usually not very good at promoting ourselves, but I, I do think that this is something that is a very good story to share.
Especially once it's completed, especially if we're way ahead of the game.
Yes.
Right, and the fact that, you know, people look for older houses to move into, to start out in, or because they want a specific type of older house, you know, they want something like that. I think that that's definitely a marketing opportunity. You know, when you think about that, that, hey, you know, you're going to buy a home in town and you're not going to have to worry about the service that comes from the street into the house being.
being an issue with lead, or being an issue, you know, in the future with the house, that, to me, is something we rightfully should be able to go out and promote, that that's not, that's not something you have to worry about in this city. And then, question I have is, what, what would $7 million look like over 30 years as an increase in the budget? I mean, is that something that we'd have to do a rate increase in the Water Department for, or is that something that can easily be into, you know, how, how does that affect that budget and those rates? Because I think that's something we should all know.
Yes. What complicates my answer to that is that we are going to have to have increases in the rates anyway, because of other water projects. I'm not sure how much of that increase would be attributable to just this, but I can get an answer to that, of course, to the council.
I'm sure Peggy can figure that out.
Absolutely.
And that's something I think would be good for us to know, that, you know, it's X dollars, you know, in the, in the realm of the city budget or the, the water rate, so that way, it's easily justifiable, or easy to talk about if somebody asks, you know, what did all this cost us? And then, every dollar that's a forgivable loan should also be broadcast to the public, that so they know that that's
Yes.
what their Water Department did for the city.
Absolutely.
I have a question about the forgivable loan component. Does waiting around to find out if it's forgivable going to delay any sort of work we're doing?
No.
Okay, great. I'd hate to wait around to remove lead pipes
Exactly.
to save a buck. Yeah.
But we're not.
It's not going to get any cheaper.
Yeah. And, and the reason why we're asking about this now is because if we're able to let this, to bid in the fall, we get a lot better pricing from the contractors than when they've got their book of business for 2025 already. All right, great. Thank you. In Public Works, they've completed the new bike path along Pamarko Drive. Actually, they have not completed it. It's delayed until later this month and, or early November. The Carriage Crest Stormwater Pumping Station is on track for completion by late November. And, let's see, is there anything? Oh, and we have done, in Police, the 2024 Sergeant's Testing Process was wrapped up last week. We had nine candidates who completed written testing and oral interview with the Board of Fire and Police Commission and an Assessment Center. And so the Board will review and certify the final results at an upcoming meeting, and the list will be valid for three years, but it's great to have nine candidates who are able to go through all of that testing. And that's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions?
I have something else. I don't have a question.
Okay.
Got another.
Tim, question, and then... Okay.
Where are we at with the city surveillance project?
We're in a really good place. Can I announce the, why don't you do it, Max? You're leading the project.
So, we're in a really good place, like Laura said. We're finalizing our contracts and our agreements now. You should see something on your agenda in the next couple of weeks. The good news is, is that we're really happy with the partner we eternally selected. I'm not going to name it at this time, but they're a local company. We're really happy with them. They have a good track record, and we're also likely to see it come in a good amount under budget, so that's a good thing as well.
Like, under budget.
I'd love to see it, yeah.
Maybe.
Oh, I just, no, I just, I'm curious as to why there hasn't been more communication around that. I, I was surprised to find, because obviously, I'm in, in the community. I was surprised to find everyone was getting emails saying they, you know, didn't win the, win the project. I would have thought something like that would have brought in front of council before any award was made, or anything like that.
We narrow it down before, and we had a tremendous interest in it. We received, what is it, 11?
Yeah, we received many notice, or we received many proposals. A number of them, we took, we...
A lot of people dropped out, too.
Yeah, so what...
For reasons, yeah.
So, at the end of the day, what we did is, we got a number of proposals. Many of them were what we considered non-responsive, so they did not provide adequate information. They did not answer the RFP essentially. So those were ultimately just tossed out, kind of on the top. What we did then is, we looked at the responsive bidders, looked at their pricing, had meetings with them, had additional conversations, refined scope, and then ultimately, we had two finalists selected, and we asked for pricing and kind of that final scope, and one was substantially over budget, to the point where we weren't ever going to bring that to you, really, just because of how much it was over budget. And then ultimately, that left us with one firm that we believe is highly qualified, references checked out, et cetera. So depending on certain projects, like when we do road projects and other things, we tend to bring the final agreement to you for your approval, but the actual kind of behind-the-scenes conversations of scope and whatnot tend to generally live in those staff-level conversations.
Yeah. No, for sure. I, I must have misunderstood. I thought we had said we were boiling it down, and then they were going to come in, or you guys were going to present each one of those, and then it, all good. Because I, I have my feels on it. You guys know, I mean, I've voiced those to you, Max, so those really haven't disappeared. I mean, I'll just throw that out there. So I'm, I would love to get more details on kind of where, where things are at, even, even from a technology standpoint.
And for sure. That's, our intent from here on out is to have, when we bring it to you, the vendor present to be able to answer those questions. We're still finalizing that as well, the specific kind of individual details. We have a good understanding where we're at. We didn't really have any concerns there as well. But we've generally done that more with, like, professional services-type things, where, like the River Street Corridor, the, the police space needs analysis, where there's not that big of a difference between vendors. In this situation, we were talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars in differences between multiple vendors, so that's kind of how that, that went.
Right. I, yeah. I, I think we walked ourselves right into that, though. I think we, the way that was written was too broad, but we'll, we'll see who this mystery vendor is.
I wanted to ask if we were going to get to meet or swear in Officer River at some point.
Officer, Officer River. Versa. Is adorable. But she is in training right now, and yeah, once she makes it through her initial training, then she, you're going to see River all over the place.
Want to train at my house.
Dog's not a good example.
Good opportunity for a, another meet-your-council-member event.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah.
She was a big help in the road diet videos.
On YouTube.
Part of a man study, a manpower study completed, and the, when, when will we see that?
So we have been presented with a draft of it, but we haven't gone over it with the consultant yet, but we expect to do that this week.
And then the other thing, any update from the guys in Florida?
Yeah, they're back.
Oh, they're back?
Yeah.
Yeah, Tony, they, they were deployed out Wednesday evening, 10:00 PM. They drove straight through, arriving about 11, what's the time? It's 1:00 in the morning on Thursday, no, actually Friday morning, but Thursday night. So they were down there 32 hours. They were not put to work or anything. They were at Ocala, at the Fire College down there, and then they were released by Florida to return. They returned back, stopping in Franklin, Tennessee, for about a five-hour stop, and then returned back on Sunday at 7:00 PM. So 58 hours of driving, 32 hours of deployment, time down in Florida, for a total of five days. We sent an engine and a command vehicle down there with support. We were part of what's called Illinois Mavis Task Force One, which we, we were part of Mavis Division 13, which is Southern King County. Northern King County is Mavis Division 2. We teamed with them to send five engines, four support vehicles, which included two generators, light towers, and two what they call Western shelters, which are the portable tent cities down there, plus a command vehicle of two chiefs. So 22 people, 22 personnel in all, two of them, two of them being from Batavia, one fire engine from Batavia, one support vehicle, and, and a Western shelter trailer from Batavia.
And did they all get released and sent back, or?
Yeah, they're all back. All...
Everybody got, okay.
Well, all of Illinois. So we sent two task, two task force, I'm sorry, three task force, strike, what they call strike team forces out, down out of Illinois. So that would have been 22 personnel per strike team for 66 personnel, 15 engines, got to get it right, 12 support trailers and vehicles, and three command vehicles. So they were all, we deployed separately. That was out of Northern Illinois, which was our division, mid, basically Eastern Illinois, kind of along the lower Cook County, Indiana area, and then one out of Southern Illinois. They all deployed separately just for the urgency. Normally, we meet, but due to the urgency, they all deployed separately down, but then they were, as we normally do under operations, returned together as one unit. So, and fuel stops taken an hour and a half, and I'm not going to get into personal breaks and things, trying to move that kind of equipment, and those amount of people can be a family vacation, to say the least. So, but everyone, there was no injuries, you know, some minor damage to equipment, but all in all, it was a safe and successful journey. And the fortunate thing is, we weren't needed, as, as the first, you know, thought. So, good question. Any others?
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I have something I want to share with the council, because I think some of you may be getting asked about this. About, I don't know, 10 days ago, we had a very nice dog in town disappear, and the people were feeling very bad about it, and they have been advertising and asking for people to let them know if they find the missing dog, or whatever. Well, they haven't gotten any response, so apparently, over this past weekend, some people joined them, and they made pictures of the dog. And the next thing I know, this dog poster is on stop signs, stoplights. It was on all the stoplights in downtown Batavia this morning. And as a result of that, I had, I think, four different calls, two from other groups in town that wanted to know, who at the city did they have to go do to get permission to put their signs on the stoplights? And then, most interestingly, I had people from both political parties call me, wanting to know, would it be okay if they started putting political sign? I said, I don't think so. So we met this afternoon with our code enforcement, and I think we came to the idea that we should probably go out and take the signs down, and give them back to the people who put them up, and say, you know, we're here to help you in any way we can, but we can't let you start putting all these signs on these public signs, because that's starting a whole new thing, where everybody and their brother is going to want to advertise on the stoplights and everything else. So I, I don't know, I don't know if we've got them all down yet, but they're coming down. And so I'm thinking that some of you may get a call, or somebody may approach you and say, why did you make them take the sign down, or whatever it is? And I'm as empathetic about it as anybody else, but there's a, far as you can let them go, you just can't let them go that far, because there would, I could see, after I got the calls from the political parties, I'm thinking, you know, we'll have these, all kinds of signs all over the place, if you don't do some stop of this whole thing, so.
Maybe for a lost dog, though, we could do, like, something on the city socials, or something like that.
That's not, you know...
Share that.
The Police Department usually shares those.
There you go.
Yeah. So I think we've already, we've already done it. I, I totally agree with you, but I mean, there's just, there's a limit as to how far you can go with this, putting signs up on cities, city signs.
Put guardrails together of what's acceptable, and how long it's up there for, and that way, we can let the people know, it can be up here for 10 days, and then after that, they'd be taken down.
The only, the only thing is, it requires somebody to manage that, because the groups themselves, we saw with the homecoming decorations last year, remember that? And there was the controversy over, people put up the decorations, but they never take them down, and I think somebody showed up at the podium with a big garbage bag full of
Well, and I think that, you know, we're doing a great job with a lot of stuff that we've put out on social media and everything, and I think this would be a perfect one to have, you know, okay, here's what the city ordinance is. Show the parkway, show this, you know, the street, and show where stuff goes. And, you know, I mean, it's, especially over, right now by me on Main Street, there are signs everywhere. And, you know, one day, there's a whole bunch of signs out there, and some of them disappear. Some of them don't.
Who's going to be the poor guy tasked or gal tasked with going ripping all the sign? You know, I can just see it on things to complain about right now. This evil, you know, council tearing down our signs of the dog.
Well, there are, the reality is, is there are rules for it, and, you know, we have to remind people, just like we have to remind people to stop at stop signs.
Messaging.
You know, I mean, it's something I think that we should be aware of, and I mean, right now is the perfect time to talk about it, because the next couple of weeks, we are going to have signs everywhere.
Yes.
I thought the whole council needed to know what was going on, and what we were doing about it, so.
Tara?
Yeah, one more other. Sorry. It's the night of others. This will be very, very quick. Compliment to Public Works. This is along the streets and safety line. A couple weeks ago, the day that the bridge in Winding Creek opened, I got a call, or an email from a resident, and this must have been in the evening. I saw it very early in the morning, reached out to Gary, and Rahat, and Laura, and said, hey, I got a request for a stop sign. It was an intersection where there was only one stop sign of, four options for a stop sign, and one is decidedly not enough. And I think before lunchtime, there was a temporary stop sign up. So the emails that went and just flew, and like, immediate action was taken. It was awesome. So just huge thank you for all of that.
At the north end of the bridge, or, because I've been driving out there, watching it get done, and take test drives out there, and go out and see the progress on it.
Yeah, it's super cool. Yeah, it was the, so if you're heading west on...
Branson.
Is that Branson? Yeah. Okay. I've run on it. I have not driven on it. Yeah, but it was fantastic. So thank you to everybody who made that just appear before lunchtime.
Any others? Okay, then I'll look for a motion for adjournment.